Let's call the meeting in order for December 22nd, 2021. We'll start with the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're gonna skip the town administrator weekly update. And we're gonna warrant bills. You guys all signed up?
Yep.
Okay, approval of the agenda.
I have a motion that we approve the agenda of December 22nd.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes of the last meeting.
We're going, yeah.
We're gonna table those. Okay, department head committee chair updates. Code enforcement.
Yeah, code enforcement planning board. So Mr. Whitman is here. Mr. Sivney was not able to make it. Something came up. He did however, give me a statement to read on his behalf. And then, as I understand it, Chris is going to follow up and give you more information.
So you can read that first, then?
Yeah. So the chairman and members of the board of selectmen, I've asked Jennifer Rue to read this on my behalf, since I'm not able to attend tonight's meeting. There has been some ongoing concern from the planning board chair and the members of the planning board, as well as the land use department about the growth of the gravel pits in Acton, specifically on H Road. The land use department, as well as the clerk's office, has received an abundance of concerns from the residents of Acton. These concerns revolve around the conditional uses of existing gravel pits, extraction areas, heavy equipment, and commercial truck traffic, as well as to what the extraction areas may be doing to Acton's natural landscape. At this time, the land use department and planning board would like the board of selectmen to consider holding a special town meeting for the residents of Acton. As you know, as you know, this meeting would be held so that the residents could be presented with the option to vote on a temporary moratorium to temporarily suspend any immediate growth of new extraction areas and gravel pits in the area. The time given by the moratorium will allow Acton's planning board the time to review the land uses and zoning for commercial extraction areas in the town of Acton, so that we can better assure these certain areas are able to sustain the amount of excavation and commercial truck traffic for future growth. As you are aware, this is a time-sensitive matter, and we look forward to your approval of holding a special town meeting concerning the moratorium. He is looking for approval before spending time and resources on the preparation of a draft moratorium to be reviewed by the board of selectmen.
How long would the moratorium be for?
I don't know, but I guess we're gonna leave that to you folks.
Well, I mean, you're the one bringing it to us.
We thought, we didn't want probably like 18 months or so?
So yeah, just so we're clear, as all of them start to come up, the planning board has not actually talked about this as an agenda item. So they're, the CEO spoke to them individually, so they haven't had a chance to really put it on the agenda and discuss it. He wanted to see if it was something, he had a roll call to each one of them to see if it was something they would support in regards to moratorium. But whether it's 60, 90, 120 days, the planning board knows it's their responsibility, but they've yet to have a conversation. So anything they say tonight are as individuals.
Yeah, I just wanna make clear that the only reason I said that they come to us, when I talked to the chair and the code officer on the conference call, they wanted to know whether or not this is something they could or could not do. And, go ahead.
And as Jennifer indicated, we have not discussed this as a board. So my comments are not made from the board. However, as a board member, we have had people come forward with concerns about safety, increased traffic, big trucks, noise, dust, proximity to water, and so forth. The maximum moratorium for the moratorium are governed by Title 30A, subsection 4356 of the main revised statutes. And the maximum time period that a municipality can adopt is 180 days.
Right, okay.
And then after that, if the matter hasn't been resolved and the public harm remains, then it can possibly be extended.
By another vote?
By, I believe, of the select boards can extend that. They can't put one in place, but they can extend it, I believe. So the maximum is 180 days. And I think it's important that people understand that a moratorium cannot be voted in or invoked simply because people would prefer that a type of business doesn't exist, or that, you know, "not in my backyard" kind of thing. The legal standard for a moratorium being adopted, I'll just read the one that I believe is pertinent. There are more than one. But one of them is, because the application of existing comprehensive plans, land use ordinances, or regulations, or other applicable laws, if any, is inadequate to prevent serious public harm from residential, commercial, or industrial development in the affected geographic area. So again, there's gotta be a serious public harm at stake. And again, in my opinion, people have come forward with potential serious public harms that if we continue to have, I mean, the planning board can't do anything. If somebody comes forward at this point wanting approval for another gravel pit, or whatever, mining, something of that nature, in the same area as they already exist, if they meet the criteria of the zoning, we can't just say, "No, we don't want anymore," or "The neighbors aren't happy." And I'm not sure that everyone understands that. I think they get frustrated when they come before us and say, you know, "The dust, the noise, we're not happy," and we go ahead with it. We can't do what they want. And again, we couldn't put this forward absent a serious public harm. And so again, just my opinion, people are voicing potentially serious public harms if we continue to expand even, you know. It's a collective danger, I think, with the increase in trucks.
So to kinda put everything in perspective here, so as of right now, our zoning allows certain pits to do certain operations. With the moratorium, those pits are excluded from that?
Correct, this would be a moratorium.
New ones.
For future.
New ones.
And I believe, as far as I know, that you can do a moratorium, kinda like the way you read it, that if there's a major concern about something, we can put, like we did with the marijuana. Same idea we did with the marijuana, we'll put a moratorium on because we had, but the problem is during that time that moratorium's on, of course, we didn't really, we haven't really worked on it like we should have. But we, this is the time to correct some of the wrongs and make sure that we're in line. We can create different ordinances.
Right, and that's.
And point to correct it.
Yeah, and that's exactly what, not to interrupt, but that's exactly what the code officer mentioned, was that during this period of the moratorium, that the code officer and the planning board would be having public hearings to decide if they change the zoning altogether, to maybe, you know, not allow certain things in town that might currently be in there, or maybe they put different fees in place, or fines in place. There's a lot of things that can be incorporated into the ordinance to make them better handled down the road.
I got one.
Maybe overly ambitious, but possibly an ordinance change could be put before the voters in June, for example.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not.
I think it would be in our best interest to do this as soon as possible, for the simple reason that if somebody right now has decided they wanna open up a new pit in town, we don't wanna hang them up for a long period of time.
Right, and the planning board has the right through the land use office. I mean, if somebody brings an application in today, there's nothing in the ordinance that says they need to be on the next agenda. And once the board makes a decision that they're going to go forward with the moratorium, and then they're gonna start writing it, there is, you know, the CEO spoke to Durwood Parkinson, and there is some areas that will protect the town while we're working on it and doing the special town meeting. But you're right, it needs to be, if it's something you guys agree on, the special town meeting needs to happen sooner or later. But we've got, the planning board's got some work before them to get this moratorium written quickly.
I did explain to the chair and the code officer that I would entertain myself, I would entertain it only with a vote from the planning board. Yeah, I wanna vote on it, though.
Yeah, you need to.
I don't know if you can have another vote, 'cause I want an official.
So what you'd probably be looking at, now your next meeting is on the 6th, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, you always have the option of having a special meeting. You know, it doesn't always have to be on Thursday. Maybe, you know, maybe we count the 10 days out, and you guys can meet, you know, sooner than that, so that you can take an actual vote and maybe, you know, instruct the land use department to start pulling moratoriums from neighboring towns. Because there are quite a few that we found online. And you guys are gonna have those in front of you and start, you know, redlining what you think would work for Acton.
The only reason I wanna vote from your committee is, because really, you guys are coming to us. So I wanna make sure that this is on you guys. You guys feel this is needed? Because we're not the one making the concern about it.
So our action is only to authorize a special meeting?
Yeah.
Basically.
It would be the planning board that would authorize the moratorium?
Yeah, the planning board would write the moratorium. I mean, we would still, it would still go through the selectman's office. I mean, we still need to have it.
Still have to go through the finance committee, wouldn't it?
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah.
They would have to go through the finance committee.
Yeah, they would make a recommendation on it. I think the ordinance is anything but election, so they would need to look at it. But we wanna make sure that an attorney looks at it, you know, that our town's attorney that, you know.
Are there any pending?
Well, he did, but Durwood Parkinson is gonna be handling this.
Are there any pending permit requests for this?
No.
No.
No, 'cause if, like, if there was.
It would be grandfathered.
It would be grandfathered.
We're just trying to have a game.
Understand.
It's all this end of town, and there's a lot, how much can the road commission handle on, you know, what?
I think, and one thing that's come to my mind is the variation between every different pit in town seems has a different start.
Start time, and, yeah, that's crazy.
There'd be some consistency somewhere on that.
And as I look back.
I would think they all should start at the same time and get done at the same time.
And they all actually started at different times. It's like there's seven that all start at different times.
And it's kinda hard for, say, if we have a sheriff in town, if we get one back, and we get a sheriff in town to be able to go by the ordinance of their conditional use, well, when you got several different starting dates.
I mean, and that just happened, you know, that just happened inadvertently over the years by different planning board members.
But something you can clean up now, though.
Uh, no, you can't change the conditional, I don't think.
No, no.
Oh, you can go forward.
Anybody going forward, you know, you could put something in there that this is your start time for certain zones, you can zone in or however you wanna do it. But this could be something that you could take care of some of the odds and ends, you know, could be clarified.
Right, just keep it consistent, be sure it's consistent throughout, even after our, if something's already gone.
I mean, I don't care what time it starts, I just, I think everybody ought to be starting at the same time.
That would be helpful.
Yep.
So overall, does the board support the idea of a special town meeting? If the planning board can pull this together, what are we thinking?
I think we have to.
Yeah.
I believe that'd be.
I think the time's come.
The concerns they got, I mean.
Where it needs to be resolved.
Well, I mean, if we get a, like I said, you get a vote out of your committee, and I'll support whatever the committee does.
Yeah, we're going on the 6th. You know, just standing on there for 12 hours during the election, you know, you saw the speed of trucks and, you know, certain trucks with speed, certain groups, you know, and that's the mother issue, you know, for harm.
Yeah, that's something I think we gotta address in a different situation, though.
But you don't get all that into whatever you're trying to do.
Well, it doesn't make it very easy on the pit itself, when you see that on the outside of it. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So are you guys thinking a January special town meeting? How quickly are we thinking that we're gonna pull this together? We haven't got that far yet. We'll discuss that Thursday.
We haven't got that far. We can talk about Thursday and then see.
I'll pull out those requirements, so we can kinda work on a timeline.
So you're gonna, do you have an idea when you, they're gonna have a meeting? When's the next meeting already scheduled?
Well, their meeting is on the 6th, so.
So that's something you can put on your agenda for the 6th, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, no, I just, when did they think they wanted to have a special town meeting?
Yeah.
And then maybe, you know, if you get to, I can add another meeting in the following week or something. If you have enough time to do that, like, you said.
Well, if you wanna do it as soon as possible, then I would do my homework and start looking through some moratoriums that you can kinda go off.
You wanna look at, one of the first pages in your zoning book, and it's not my department, so I don't have it memorized, but one of the first things talks about changes to the ordinance. So, I mean, you're looking to just put the moratorium on, not make changes to the zoning ordinance at that special town meeting, right?
Right.
Okay, so. So you won't have to have a public hearing or anything, because an open town meeting is considered a public hearing?
And once you get that done, and if it passes, then you've got some time to work on what you.
And depending on what the school does, and how far you go out with the moratorium, you may be able to get zoning changes directly onto, maybe, they usually like to vote in April. So you could almost go right from the moratorium to zoning change, depending on what the ordinance says, you know, maybe in April, not have to wait until June. Assuming the ordinance says a special or annual, I have to look at the ordinance. But do you know what I mean? Because you don't wanna have a lapse in between the moratorium running out and the annual town meeting. So if the school votes in April, we might be able to piggyback it. But, yeah, have to get the book.
Okay.
We wouldn't be able to do it before that?
Well, you mean a special town meeting to change the zoning? One of the first pages.
Just for the moratorium.
Oh, the moratorium, yes, but what I'm saying is when the moratorium expires in 120 days, there's gonna be a lull in time before June comes. So, you know what I mean? I'm just saying that possibly you could vote on it in April, with the school vote.
But we gotta look into also, like Mr. Broda said, whether or not we can extend that or ask to go to another vote.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure he's right, but I'm gonna pull the, I'll pull it, and we'll look at it. We'll try to have some things for you for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, more to pump ahead committee chairs. AC 9, we're gonna no old business, we're going down to new business appointments.
All right, so Chairman Long and myself reviewed the Warren Finance Committee members and the openings. Joseph Rumah, who is an alternate member, is moving up to take Mr. McGurty's seat. So you have an appointment for him, same expiration term of June of 2023. Jason Sivney asked that Michael DeMers, when the election is over, be reappointed as a deputy code officer and deputy local plumbing inspector for assistance. So that's there. We talked about Ken Allen, who was a cemetery committee member that, for several months, didn't come in. Well, as soon as we revoked it, he came in to be sworn in. We apologized, he is still interested, so we've reappointed him. And Crystal Adams is interested in joining the RET committee.
Sure. Should we start with one, or walk our way through? They're all kinda different, so we can't lump them.
Make a motion to appoint the following people, sure?
Oh, okay.
Just say the name and the term ending.
So why don't we do this here? Oh, we got, they're all different committees, aren't they? I was gonna do them a couple at a time, but you wanna do a couple there? Do them separate?
I can do the first.
Different committees, so.
And I apologize, it's Crystal Andrews, so if you can just write on it, I'll fix it afterwards. Whoever's got that one.
All right, it's all just Andrews. All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Crystal Andrews to the Certificate of Appointment Title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office, Municipality of Acton, Maine, to Crystal Andrews. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton do, in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as recreational committee member within for the municipality of Acton until 6/30/2022, given under our hand this 22nd day of December 2021.
Do we hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so let's sign this.
Yep.
That's Crystal's, so I have to retype it.
Oh, okay, so you have to retype it, then we'll, okay, never mind.
And you don't have to read the whole thing, just say their name and the term and the ending.
Okay, I'll make a motion to appoint Michael DeMers as deputy code officer, deputy local plumbing inspector, given under the 22nd day of December 2021.
Until?
Until, oh, where is it?
Keep going.
Oh.
Right above it.
6/30/2022.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
I made it too short.
Okay, we gotta sign that one.
Oh, this one, we can't sign yet.
Tom's gonna get his just right.
Did you have another to do, David?
That one there, she has to redo it, so we have to re-sign that one.
I'll move to appoint Kenneth Allen to the cemetery committee member until 6/30/22, effective December 22nd, 2021.
I second that. All in favor?
Move to appoint Joseph Rumah, effective December 22nd, 2021, to, through 6/30/2023, to the Warren Finance Committee.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Okay.
You gotta sign that one.
Yeah, just here, please.
Just down below mine.
This one for all of us.
Yep. Already signed that one.
Well, he needs.
You gotta sign this one, too.
That's just our next.
This is just a memo. Oh, you did it at the bottom?
Yeah, you can't, it should be a little clearer.
Nope, that'll be fine, I guess. It's at the bottom.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
Yeah, that one right there, I believe. Yep. Okay, we're gonna go down to B liaisons.
So with the change of selectmen midterm, we wanted to have a chance to review this list. Normally, you have gone, they're appointed right after the election, starting at the beginning of the fiscal year, July 1 through June 30. I did just automatically assume, and I apologize for that, but wanted to look at them and see if this is how you wanted to continue through June, or if you were looking to make any changes. That would give Mr. McGurty, the school department, land use department, and RET committee.
Okay. How often do these rotate, or do they?
Every year.
Once a year? Do you typically rotate them?
Yes.
Because I think, okay, that's really what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
So if you did halfway through the year, it really screwed the rotation up.
I understand, but in June, they would likely rotate to other areas.
I'll pull the last two or three years, and I don't let them have the same one twice unless they haven't, unless we're to that point, so.
Good, good, all right.
So you're good?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you. We all set on that? Do we?
Yeah, I would, yeah.
Great.
You don't mind taking over the ones where Ed had?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll just switch in June.
We'll go down to policies.
Okay, so the first one that you're getting handed, you're getting two copies. You're getting, this is the personnel policy. I'm not expecting anything tonight, this is more homework for you, and I'm sorry it's homework over the holiday. But you're getting one that has no watermark in it, that's the current policy. If you look at the last page. Last page of the policy, it was last adopted or amended in September of 2020. So that's just something for you to compare it to, because then the other one that you have is a proposed. Now, this proposed personnel policy are changes primarily from the treasurer. There are changes regarding some of the earned paid leave that now has to be allowed, some descriptions of jobs, the transfer station going up to 35 hours, talks about payroll stubs, and addition of a state holiday that the state added, various minor changes, but, so you'll see those underlined and highlighted. The very last section, section 20, that's an area we really need you to spend some time in. The underline is additions that Michelle and I are recommending, but that whole section might need to be looked at. So was hoping that you could kinda look at this, and maybe, not next week, because we have Christmas, but the first meeting in January, we'll put this back on the agenda and really go through it with a fine-tooth comb, so we can tighten up the personnel policy, as you wish.
Does council typically review these?
Uh, yes, yes.
Before we act on them?
Before you act on it. Once you get all your appropriate changes in there.
We'll make a suggestion, and then they'll look through them. They'll make the, we'll make the suggestion, they'll make sure they're legal.
That's right, yeah, okay.
All right, so the next two policies, so I thought we would just start alphabetical. Policy that's being passed down right now is the abatement policy. This is for anybody that feels aggravated based on their land or building assessment. I did send this over to O'Donnell and Associates. You guys are assessors by title, but you outsource everything to John O'Donnell and Associates. So I've sent this over to him to ask him to review it. Most of the numbers in here are by state statute, I don't think there's been a lot of changes, but wanted to give you a chance to review it as well. He's referenced some of the assessing statutes on the second page. Review it, see if anything jumps out. If anybody wants to talk to Dennis, they're certainly welcome, and we'll see if he's got any changes for you. But we'll present that one probably next week, because that should be minor, if any, changes.
Okay, so next week.
All right, the next one probably won't have any changes, it's a fairly new policy. Kim's passing it down, it was, the date's not on there. It was adopted within the last probably six or eight months. Something our insurance company required, it's an abuse and molestation prevention policy. It's something that they required primarily for our RET committee.
Yeah.
Primary for the rec, the volunteers. There has to be, believe it or not, there has to be a policy in place saying you're not allowed to touch little children in order for there to be consequences.
Mm-hmm.
So that's.
Oh, you're okay?
No, you gave me two.
I thought.
I did, I'm sorry.
We just have an extra, that's all.
Fingers are all dry.
That was mine, you took mine.
Salt on my fingers, I can't feel it.
So take a look at that one, and see if there's anything. And the last one, so this one we should be able to look at next week as well.
Do we have training on this?
Yes, the department heads and employees do. The volunteers do, we do background checks with them, and they get copies of the policy.
Does anybody think that they should take a class? Before they're.
Tell them the volunteers?
As far as these kinds of. I know, but I'm just saying.
If they do a background check, I think they're probably pretty good. If we make these guys do any more than we have to, probably discourage more than anything. That would be my feeling.
I would agree.
Yeah, I. All right, and the last one that you have is an acceptance of credit and debit card policy. It's something that we haven't made any changes to since 2019. It's short and sweet, really essentially just says that you'll accept them. There's a 2.5% handling fee, that's something that inform me, the middle guy gets. It's not a revenue of the town, and that's specified. Really, the primary purpose of this policy is so that we can tell people we don't accept credit cards over the phone. And unless you have in the policy, we can't do that. There's a stipulation on the last line that authorizes the town administrator to make a decision on a case-by-case if necessary.
Military or something like that?
Yeah, once in a while we'll have somebody overseas, or, you know, on a foreclosure, we're certainly not gonna, if that's their only way of making payment, you know, I'm not gonna prevent things. But what we don't want is October 15th, on tax day, to come and have, you know, 100 people that want us to take credit cards over the phone, and they're just not secure over the phone. So that's really why we don't accept them. So, but take a look at that, we'll put it on for next week and see if you wanna make any changes.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, we're gonna go down to D, exit letter.
So as you recall, we brought one of the transfer station employees in for a 30-day period to assist with the change in the previous superintendent. This is just a letter to that employee confirming that their last day at the transfer station, as so expected, is Saturday, January 1st. It's technically Wednesday, the 29th, but we pre-agreed to pay through the holiday. So this lets them know how to file for unemployment when their last check is available, and thanks her for the services provided to town.
You have to make a motion or anything?
Yeah, it's coming down.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't mean.
Oh, it's okay. It's just, we just sign him, or do we have to make a?
No, you would make a motion after. You can read it, it's all public information, don't fool.
Okay. Does it need to be read?
It doesn't need to, no.
You said to make a motion to accept our move to accept this.
To sign the exit letter?
Yes.
All right, I'll second that.
All in favor? There you go. Okay, we're gonna go down to transfer station hopper damage.
All right, so some time ago, I'm gonna say early summer, there was some damage done to the transfer station hopper. I'm gonna start by making sure the board understands that nobody saw the damage done. Nobody knows exactly who did it. It is believed that when they took one of the cans out, that the damage, that the hopper was damaged, and it was dented based on that. But because they have access outside of transfer station hours, we can't prove it. Could a car have backed into it? Yes, likely, probably not. Atlantic Recycling, they came out and looked at it, who are the people that would fix it? They believe it happened with the can removal as well, that a different company does. But it is $1,463 to fix it, the town has a $1,000 deductible. does, but it is $1,463 to fix it, the town has a $1,000 deductible, we'll certainly send it over to our insurance company, but with nobody knowing who or how it actually happened, I mean, I'm not sure it's going to go through the insurance company, but nevertheless, your superintendent believes it should be fixed.
No, no, yeah, definitely, I mean, as the liaison to the transfer station, I've been dealing with this a little bit, and, you know, the company's denying they did it, so, so we're kind of stuck in this, you know, if this was a large, this is a lot larger number than this.
Yeah.
Then I, I would believe me be fighting this, but seeing it's almost the same as our deductible is, it's for a few, couple hundred dollars, it's almost, it kind of, it just kind of stinks the way it all went down.
And if you go through and read the, read the details of it, which I read all the details, it's possible that it's going to, it's going to come in less, because he talks about, that he built, he estimated for extra steel that we're probably not going to use, and also more hours for the, for the fixer that, you know, the employee than necessary, so hopefully it comes down a little as well, but if you want to authorize the work to be fixed, you need to make a motion to accept that bid and initial.
Do they do this after hours or during hours?
I'm not sure what their schedule is.
They, they, the work or the damage?
The damage.
The damage, they go in on Tuesdays and Thursdays and empty the cans, when the town, when the transfer station is not open.
Okay.
So it's after hours.
Yeah.
So, do I sign this, is that the?
No, 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 we're going to make a motion.
You're going to make a motion.
So I'll make the motion. Make a motion, we accept the, the quote from Atlantic Recycling Equipment LLC for $1,200. Nope, nope, $1,463, I'm sorry.
I'll second that. Second.
All in favor? I forgot I made the motion, I don't typically make the motions.
At least two of you will initial the bottom, we'll get that work scheduled right after the holidays.
The bottom, or authorized?
Anyway, just.
Do you want to initial that, David?
Yep.
Just needs two. Can you have this next?
Oh, okay. And I have one more thing.
You have one more thing?
I forgot.
Okay, we're going to go down to F, warrant finance meeting, I asked, I have this added on to the, the agenda for tonight, being the liaison to the warrant finance committee, we, uh, had a meeting.
Monday.
Monday, I'm sorry. And we had some discussion there about the amount of time that we're, we're allowing the Finance Warrant Committee to meet with the employees, the department heads, and I made a couple suggestions about possibly getting a couple of extra nights, meeting with the department heads, giving them, because typically they do it on a Saturday, we'll do it all over departments on a Saturday, 15 minutes per department head, out of there by noon time, yee-haw, you know, but, uh, we've decided there that, you know, we really ought to have a more adequate time for them to do that, so my suggestion was to pick a couple nights, either on the second or third week between the.
After they get the.
March.
After they get the warrant?
Yeah, after they receive the warrant, it's like a six-week period, like the second or third week or fourth week or whatever, try to find a couple nights where we can bring the department, two department heads in per night, and give them the time that they need to, and maybe we probably ought to allocate a timeline, especially if you've got two, because you don't want the other departments sitting around waiting all night long to get their part, but, but what we're going to do is we're going to, Jen, you're going to, you're going to touch with.
Dennis.
Dennis, to get, you know, so he can do the planning, you guys feel that?
Figure out, you know, days that would work for the whole committee and, and us.
So we should be able to keep the, the times we have.
So my, my understanding is we're not doing the Saturday meeting this year?
No, actually.
We may.
We should, at, first, they'll meet with them, they'll get their warrant, and then a couple weeks later, we'll get two weeks' worth of department heads to come in, you know, and that's going to be, and it's not going to be 15 minutes, it'll be longer.
Right.
You know, so they can ask questions, they've got a few weeks to get some questions together, but after that, we should have a Saturday before the warrants do, in case they have.
Any further follow-up questions?
Follow-up questions.
And 15 minutes of work at that point, time probably be fine for the, for the.
So the Saturday, the Saturday will be after the warrant and finances met with all the department heads?
Yes.
And that way, if they've just got, you know.
So once we get, you get Dennis the warrant, we'll see how much time, a couple weeks,